Hello, everybody. I'd like to call the Board of Selectmen meeting. It's a special meeting to know to order on February 27, 2023. To be able to pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First order of business is correspondence. We did get a late letter. It came at about six o'clock, but I was lucky enough to get it. So I wanted to make a comment in the record. The letter came from Paula Antolini, and it's similar to the letter at the last meeting where we're discussing use of ARPA funds. Now, there have been a number of things that we've used from ARPA for many different reasons, and Miss Antini talks about the ability that we should have more left over to take care of maybe another COVID response if we need it. So she disagrees how we're actually spending the funds. She also alludes like some of the things that we can spend some funds from. And want to take note, one of the things that we can spend ARPA funds from or for is a loss of revenue. Many of the things that we have done while we're keeping, we're spending them in the categories that ARPA has decided could or the grant allows. We've also done it as general loss of revenue. So one of the things coming up tonight, we're going to speak about is a demolition of the police station. And in her letter, she talks about the fact is there urgency to this? So I want to kind of make a public comment that with respect to the police station, this was something that's been on the books for some period of time. We had hoped to get a steep grant, but we did not get. And I think the urgency now was because we have a price on this where now if we keep putting it back out again, we actually could incur a greater cost. So that's why we're delivering on that tonight. When we do special meetings, obviously budget season, things get put on special meetings. I just want to make sure everybody understands that we're trying to be as transparent as we can, which is why I'm making sure we talk about the correspondence letter involved. So thank you very much, Paul, for sending a letter in if you're out there, and I'd like to move on to the next item for discussion. So first up, I'd like a motion to discuss the demolition of the old police station. Reiterate the motion. Go into second. Okay, great. So it's open for discussion. As I, as I just mentioned a moment ago, there has been this, this, I say project on the books for some period of time. We were not able to get the steep grant when we wanted to do it. The total cost of the demolition is $194,500. Now you should have page A2 in your books, excuse me, your pack tonight. And it talks about the total cost of remediation is $16,000 and 178,500 foot demolition. One thing I'd like to do, I know that Eric is here for Public Works. Eric, if you wouldn't mind, could you give us a little bit of a, I guess, a background on how the bids were accepted?
Sure. So we got looked into this originally. Yes, going back a year and a half. First, what we did was an environmental assessment. We had a firm hygienics company look at the building. The terminal was in there. They gave us like a few things, which I didn't attach, but you know. Want to look at them. Essentially what that boiled down to was wet there as we moved from, I think everyone moved from the firing range. They also mentioned they assumed this best is a sort of a finding of any relation with these calls of the worst of waste, which I think is sort of the catchall for where some light bulbs and fire the smoke detectors. So that was basically all we got. We got a we asked them to give us like an engineer's cost estimate for all that. That came combined between the cleanup and demolition. The building was about $230 altogether. So we put it out to bid. We actually put it out to bid as two separate RFs, just so we had the flexibility to choose the so desired, one for the abatement portion and one for the demolition. Just give you a quick rundown of where we ended up. We we ended up selecting Stanford Wrecking for both. They were the lowest bid on the remediation portion and one of lower bids on demolition. When you combine both phases together, they were out of the nine bids that we got altogether. They were near the bottom. Three bids were lower and five bids were higher, but based on, as you know, it wasn't, it wasn't purely a price base. It's also an RFP, so we looked at qualifications as well. So that obviously factors into it. We just select a low bid. So the reason I asked to kind of bring this to the fore is because that was back in August. And we've gotten sort of a verbal commitment from them to, to hold their bid for a while, but they think they're not going to be able to hold it forever. So we really only have about a month left before we go while they'll hold it for us. So if we're gonna move forward, we should do it now while we have this thing in hand. So we went through the process, bid it out, went through the process of finding somebody, selecting somebody and doing all that. So that's all set, and that's why I would hate to waste that effort, you know? If you decide not to do it for whatever reason, that's fine, but if we're gonna do it, it's simple. That's just a little bit on the schedule. Our RFP gave a maximum of four months to do the work. Stanford Wrecking's proposed schedule was to work in two months, and again, that includes both the abatement and demolition. Where we're basically gonna end up with that is we have some flexibility there if we want them to, you know, leave something or but essentially what we, what we stated in the RFP and laid out for them was to remove everything, the building, there's a radio tower, there's where it says there's a parking lot to basically, there's kind of a circular driveway. We may keep part of that pending, but at least sort of the entrance points. But again, like I said, if we decide we want to keep more or less, it's fine. But essentially the site's going to become grass or throw, move all that, just top sort of on the ceiling. So that's really the, that's really that pretty much sums it up.
Okay, thank you. Any, any questions? And I'll note that in the, in the packet, it was approved by the procurement committee on November 17, 2022, as far as the exceptions of the day.
Yeah.
So if there are no questions, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the amount of $194,500 from ARPA funds to demo the old police station. Do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And opposed, sentience, motion carries. Next on the agenda.
I just add one thing. I included this, this email app. I know the purpose of this is not to discuss what the site's going to become naturally, but I just wanted to put this in there. Point that this site is within a flood zone, just so like whatever comes down the pipe is just kept, kept on.
That's good.
Thank you.
Excuse me.
Yes.
For selectmen, I, I just have a couple of comments and questions of Mr. D'Amio because I've tried for the last couple of days to get a copy of the RFP from our purchasing agent, and I never got one. Um, when I looked this over, over the weekend, there's a couple of things. The Stanford Wrecking Company, this is a corporation and it's operating out of one place in Trumbull, but it says its distribution center is in Bridgeport. And when you go online and you look up the name of where the distribution center is, it's the same exact name, except it's an LLC. So I'm not sure, I'm assuming we're dealing with a corporation, but I'd like somebody to find that out or I'll, I'll call and find out what the difference is. The other thing is the certificate of insurance that they provided, it doesn't name the town as an additional insured. That's one of the reasons why I want to see the RFP, because it's supposed to be in the contract in order to be effective to have somebody as an additional insured. So that's another thing too. And there was one other thing. I guess that was it. Oh, I, I know what it was. I'm just asking the question because this is so old now. Did anyone vet any of the other municipalities that these people did business for? They've got a whole list of items that they did business with, but I don't know if they vetted anybody with, you know, any of the municipalities that were listed, and there was quite a few.
So thank you. Thank you, Marty, for that. What I'd like you to do is get, get him the information.
Yeah.
And if you could get the two bid sheets, because I know when we do the standard bid, you guys usually do a scoring system?
Yes.
About the, the companies that we're looking at and their background, whether they've done those, those scores were done?
Yes.
For this?
I'll get you that part for this.
Thank you.
I mean, considering, I mean, basically he was asking about amending the motion. So if we've already made the motion, we've made the decision. We'll go back then. The thing is, we've all, all voted for it. So you can't really do a motion to reconsider. So we'll, you get him the information. Again, this was, this was accepted by the procurement committee in November. So it's not that old, but we, we do want to do our due diligence. So I think the attorney brings up some good points. On the next order of business was, again, consideration of the Bergstrom Well Water Treatment Plant Project Resolution. If you all recall at the last meeting, we were given a, basically a statement for the consideration. I'm told afterwards that they gave us an incomplete statement, so I want to reread it into the record. So bear with me a second. Whereas by the townwide machine vote held in December 1st, 2022, in accordance with the Connecticut Journal statutes 7-7, following a special town meeting of November 17th, 2022, the town of Bethel approved a resolution recommendation by the Public Utilities Commission and approved by the Board of Selectmen and Board of Finance to fund an amount not to exceed $12,290,000, excuse me, and $57 for construction of a well and water treatment plant for the project referred to and known as Bergstrom Well and Water Treatment Plant Project. Said funding shall come from bonding, bond anticipatory notes, loans, temporary borrowing, and/or other appropriation as recommended by the Comptroller to be reduced by any available grants obtained by the town of Bethel and/or the Bethel Public Utilities Commission, if any. Payment for the appropriate sums shall be made by the water account users of the Bethel Public Utilities Commission. Now, this is the additional part. Whereas the town of Bethel, Connecticut is desirous to make an application to the state of Connecticut Department of Public Health or such state agency for loans and/or grants for funding to achieve the construction of the Bergstrom Well and Water Treatment Plant Project. Further, Daniel E. Carter, first selectman of the town of Bethel, Connecticut, or his designate, is authorized to provide such additional information and execute such other documents as may be required by any agency of the state of Connecticut in connection with any loans and/or grants submitted by the town of Bethel, Connecticut for the construction of the Bergstrom Well and Water Treatment Plant Project as to any amendments, recissions, and/or revisions to the applications, proposals, and/or agreements submitted thereto. So thank you for bearing with me. I needed to read that in the record, and I believe we have to accept this. So I take a, I like a motion, I make a motion that we accept the complete Bergstrom Well Water Treatment Plant Project Resolution. So all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? See, non-motion carries. Well, that was okay. So with respect to the, the next agenda item, the consideration to award the bid for the HVAC project at Bethel High School, the Board of Selectmen, the members of the Board of Selectmen have said some, some conversations with the school board, and I would like to make a motion that we table, make this on the table until a meeting when we have sufficient information from the Board of Selectmen. May I have a vote?
Aye.
All favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None? Motion carries? Okay. Next on order of business is the first selectman's presentation of the 2324 budget deliberation. So before we begin that, go ahead.
The issue is, if you're wondering, was the difference of the bids over 500,000? When we leveled the bids, there's some questions on structural engineering that may be required. There's some other questions in terms of the scope of work. One bid had all steelwork and everything was to be done by other contractors, not included in the bid. I read both bids. It's not to delay your project. It's to make sure that it's properly funded and that you don't need to come back to the board for more money. So all those questions have to be answered before we just go to go forward with the, the, the project. So that's, that's the, that's the explanation why I have this. It's not that we don't want to do it. We'll take it up next Tuesday.
Yeah, as soon as we know something back, we'll get it on the agenda right away.
Thank you.
Okay, so I, I mentioned, what I'd like to do is if, right here, if you could kind of go through the revenue numbers before we begin.
So the preliminary revenue numbers I put together, some of them we've talked about already. Recreational programs was budgeted for 23 at $620,000. We're upping that to $750,000. It's almost exactly what they brought in in '22. We anticipate they're going to bring a little bit more than that 750 this year. But we're trying to, it's a big jump, and we're trying to make sure we don't overjump on it, to be honest with you. So we're pretty confident in the 750. One of the other big changes in this budget is equal cost sharing. So the preliminary governor's budget calls for the town to get $296,000 more in ECS. Normally, we wouldn't make that kind of jump, but the rest of his, his whole proposal costs for us getting $814,179 more than we budgeted for 23. I'm confident either we're gonna get this or some of the car money. So I don't want to wait until they finish their budget. I'm fairly confident that we're gonna get at least the 300K from the state more than we budgeted for the prior year. By the time that we get through the town meeting, if I've heard otherwise, we may have to make an adjustment. I didn't want to, we like to kind of talk about what the effect of the no rate would be. So it's preliminary, but at this time, I'm including the ECS jumper in. And there's a couple of minor changes. Just today, personal property went up by $6,900 because we got what the 23 amount would be. So we're gonna make the 24 amount at least a 23 amount. So that's pretty much the revenue. So if you look at non-tax or non-no rate generated income, I'm estimating $351,000 more than the prior year. The other thing we usually talk about this time of year, and it gets a little jumbled with the revow, is how much, what we've referred to in the past as new money is new construction, renovation. The revow makes it really hard to pick some of that stuff out because a lot of the value has changed. We're estimating that like 800 to a million dollars, 800,000 to a million dollars will be just based on new construction additions, all that. The grand list growth was large. If you look at the estimated no rate sheet, it has the two columns on it. Prior year net taxable grand list was just under 2.2 billion. This year it's 2.74 billion. So the assets in the town grew to 570, just under 570,000, $570 million. Mostly due to the revow. Property values are way up. So that's where we're at as of February 27th with our estimated revenues. It's still really early, especially as the state goes. So I will monitor that and let you know if any changes. But I did, I feel like we're gonna get something more from the state because they've never had more money. And not to step on something that Dr. Tarver talks about, our enrollment's way up. At some point, we should get more ACS money. So that's where we're at.
Any questions for the selectmen? Okay, so what I'd like to do is, since the board event is on, we're gonna start with the board event account first, if we can go to that. So I, I'd like to make a motion that we open the 70-450 account, Board of Education, for discussion. You have a second? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? See none? Okay. So notification is open for discussion.
I make a motion that we reduce the Board of Education's budget superintendence recommended amount. So we'll cut 213.
Any discussion?
Second.
Second.
You're doing 214.
214.
Just the $760, just 214.
Taking it back to the super.
It's a, it's a little, it's a little shy. I think it was like 676.
676.
That's 214. No further discussion? Okay, I'd like a vote on the motion. The motion is to remove $214,000 from line 5701 from account 70-450 or petition. All favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? Motion carries?
Your new dollar amount for that account would be 54,000,209,164. So 54,209,164.
Okay.
So now we need to make a motion to accept that amount in, in this one.
Yes. Yep. I move that we accept 54,209, excuse me, 54,209,164 in the Board of Education accounts, 70-450. All favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries? I will go to each account. Actually, I see the police are here.
One of the 460.
Actually, we have to open it at some point. Let's hold it now. I make a motion that we open the Board of Education Maintenance Account, 70-460 for discussion. So all favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, open for discussion.
I make a motion that we accept the maintenance account at the current level.
I have a motion to accept the current amount, which is 513,888 dollars out of the account, 70-460. All favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
880, but I think you said 88, but.
I'm sorry. I know, I gotta start right. I really do.
I got a couple of different pair.
In the last week. I don't know what's happening. Okay.
Should we go to police?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. The number is that.
Police is counting. 20-360.
So I, I would like to make a motion that we remove one of the police cars.
We got open the numbers. Yeah, I make a motion that we open the account for discussion for the police department, account 20-360.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I, I make a motion that we remove one of the police cars and pay with it with funds from ARPA. And you know, the benefit is if we vote on it at the next meeting, it would allow Chief Pugner the ability to order the cruiser immediately because we know they're taking a long time and they're canceling orders. And I came up, I just divided, you had three cars in the line. So if you divide it by three, it came out to 62,521. We'll use ARPA funds to purchase that car if that works for you.
Jason, number one more time.
62,521. You just want to check our math by, by, to make sure we did it right.
It's actually, it would be close enough because if we took that amount for ARPA, it would still cover whatever.
We're good? All right.
Okay. Any further discussion? Actually.
We did take it a second.
Actually, did you make the motion?
I did make the motion. Oh, no. Yeah, I did.
Yeah. Make sure. I need a further discussion. Okay, so we have motion on the table to remove 600, excuse me, $62,521 from line 5403 in account 20-360, Bethel Police Department. All in favor? Opposed? See, non-motion carries.
So we'll put that up.
Yeah, we do that.
I, I got a question.
Yes, sir.
Should we be removing it from the capital account, the 5403? Lower that line first and then you do the end?
Yeah, so Brian's motion was to reduce. I don't think he said 54.
I mean, it's a capital.
I have 5403.
Yeah.
Yeah.
5403, it comes out.
I think he said capital and then must.
Yeah.
But there's.
I just, I guess I repeat the motion with the number just to make sure.
Oh. Chief, we had a lot of, oh, I make a motion to open.
It's already open.
Do you want to, want to?
So we, no, we have a, we're, we counsel what we can talk about.
So chief, over the past year, we've increased the police department by approximately three officers. And I know you're trying to get to a four person minimum, which I support. During our deliberations, you had mentioned that, you know, one officer would go a long way this year. I know you hadn't put in for any officers this year, but you felt that, you know, one officer would go a long way. Do you think that by reducing the request to two down to one, it would help you get on, well, on your way to a four man minimum?
Yeah.
Then I'm gonna make a motion, line 5101, we reduce the amount by 60,000, which would still be funding for the hiring of additional police officers.
Second. Any discussion? So I have motion on the table to reduce line 5101 salaries from account 20-360 for Bethel Police Department by $60,000. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries?
Brad, you'll read this.
Yeah.
So do you have anything to this?
No.
Yeah.
Not that.
Yeah.
Okay. So the new total for the police department is 5,652,054. So 5,652,054.
Trying to screw that up. Okay. Any other further discussion on the police department? Okay, so I'll make a motion that we accept the final amount for account 20-360 Bethel Police Department of 5,652,054. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries?
You don't have.
You don't want to.
I don't, I want to. About to get real.
She actually said she wanted to sit here and learn. I don't know. Should we do the library next, or should we keep going in order?
I'm fine with doing the library next, so she can.
So then it's optional.
Now she'll, she'll be out the door too. It's gonna start snowing.
Library 60-435.
Yeah, you would have had to wait till the very end.
Yeah.
So the order doesn't break quickly. Okay, I would like the motion to, actually, I'll make a motion to open account 60-435, library account for discussion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so open for discussion.
I think it was a very reasonable budget. I mean, she came in under 3%. Can't see cutting anything from this budget. I mean, she was very responsible in her numbers, and I think she should be proud for that.
I agree.
Yeah. Very good. Thank you, mate. Thank you very much.
So I'd like to make a motion then that we accept 932,283 dollars for account 60-435 library.
Aye.
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 Opposed? None? Motion carries? Well, you can say as long as you want.
Looks like you.
Right. You can say, you said you wanted to. You can say, you said you wanted to learn.
With this note, with this snow day coming, I don't think they're going to bed far.
Alright, so I'd like to step up to the beginning there, account ten dash one hundred. I'm gonna make, I'm gonna make a motion to open account ten dash one hundred, selectmen for discussion, all in favor?
I.
Actually, I apologize, give me a second.
Second.
Okay, all in favor? I oppose. Alright, so, over for discussion. I don't believe there were any changes here. Okay, I make a motion to accept three hundred and thirty three thousand nine hundred and eighteen dollars as a budget for account number ten dash one zero zero selectmen. All in favor?
I.
I oppose, none, motion carries. I make a motion, open account ten dash one one zero for treasurer for discussion.
Second.
All in favor?
I.
I oppose, none, great, nothing to do here.
Make a motion. Except for.
Okay, can we just make the motion to accept or do I need to remember?
I don't think.
Okay, okay, we have a motion on the table, I'll second. All in favor?
I.
I. Oppose, none.
You need it once, the dollar amount of the account.
Right. Okay. We'll make sure that we read the dollar. What's that? Yeah, here we go.
This one, I'm ready to make.
Okay, I make a motion that we open ten dash one two zero controller for discussion, turn around a second, second, all in favor? I. I was none, okay, so. How about if you wanna cut it?
He's already cut it, so he's only, he's only down eight percent, I think he could do better. Read by example.
Eight point nine three, Brian. That rounds the line.
I make a motion that we approve four hundred and thirty three thousand three hundred and twenty four dollars, that's.
Okay, all in favor?
I.
I. That's.
Sub Brad.
Okay, yeah, right, um, I make a motion, we open account ten dash one thirty for town court for discussion.
Second. Second.
Okay, got Richie for a second, all in favor?
I.
I make a motion that we accept the requested budget of two hundred and fifty two thousand six hundred and sixty five dollars.
Second.
Checking to make sure.
Yeah, I'll speak up.
Okay, okay, we have a motion on the table, all in favor?
I.
I oppose. I make a motion, we open account ten dash one four zero, the assessor for discussion.
Second.
All in favor? I oppose, none, but, okay, so again, I think it was a really good budget.
No, I was gonna make the motion to approve it. Make a motion, approve two hundred and sixty six thousand one hundred and ninety one dollars.
Second. Okay, we'll show the table to approve, all in favor?
I.
I. Oppose. Account number ten dash, I make a motion, we open account ten dash one fifty, tax collector for discussion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
I.
I. Oppose, none, good, okay.
Make a motion that we accept the requested budget of two hundred and twenty two thousand nine hundred and ninety six dollars.
Okay, we have motion on the floor, all in favor?
I.
Oppose, none, motion carries. Make a motion to open up ten dash one sixty, professional services account for discussion.
Second.
All in favor?
I.
I. Oppose, none, okay.
So my, I make a motion, we approve one hundred and eighty six thousand one hundred and eighty dollars submitted.
As motion on the floor, all in favor?
I.
I'm sorry, we didn't. Thank you. I still got here, second. Okay, we have motion on the floor to approve two hundred and eighty six thousand one hundred and eighty dollars, all in favor?
I.
I oppose. I can make a motion, we open account ten dash one seven zero probate court for discussion.
Second.
All in favor?
I. I oppose. Make a motion, we approved probate court, the budget submitted is six thousand two hundred and seven dollars.
Any discussion? Okay.
Motion.
Motion on the floor? All in favor?
I.
I. I make a motion over the count ten dash one nine zero, information technology for discussion. Second, all in favor?
I.
I, I'd just like a brief discussion, just kind of a clarification.
Be that.
Brad, I thought when we voted on the ARPA, twenty four thousand.
Yeah.
It was just to catch up, it was for extra work, it wasn't to spread that we were hiring a new employee with that money, it was just to allow more hours to get caught up on some issues they were behind.
Yeah, I thought the motion said that it was to make the part time position full time.
I, I honestly don't recall that being discussed, cause I feel a lot of times about using grant money or stuff to hire employees, that it puts us on a fiscal cliff the next year, it's just, I thought it was explained that it was to catch up, to give them extra hours, is how I thought that was explained.
Yeah, kind of pulled the minutes out of the motion.
Because if, if the Board of Finance didn't approve the position, or the budget didn't approve the position, I mean, it wasn't approved this position.
Yeah, so, some of it was, it wasn't supposed to create a cliff because we're not paying the Board of Supervisors anymore at twenty five thousand. So why there's a difference between the forty three nine oh four and the twenty five is the position that got hired became a union position. So the twenty five became more like thirty two, and we did benchmarking at the same time for the network administrator that was in charge of it. Um, and the decision by the former first selectman was to raise the salary too. Uh, cause the position, so there was those two factors in there that made up some of that increase in there.
Uh, yeah, alright, I'm not, I'm not trying to beat a dead horse, I just, you know, go, going forward, I just, you know, I would just like a real clear explanation. You know, we're doing stuff, so we understand the, the full consequences of, 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 of our actions.
Yeah, no, I understand.
I appreciate it, thank you.
But in effect, what we did, the way I understand it, is we, we got rid of half of a supervisor and got a full time.
And pleasure.
Give the other guy.
Yeah, so, I don't know how the motion was made, then I, without going back to the video, the says first selectman made a motion with second bias, like the straight to approve using twenty five thousand dollars for ARPA funds, to move the part time IT position to full time until July one twenty twenty three, and then moving full time salary into twenty three twenty four fiscal year budget, discussion in two, all in favor?
Okay.
So that's how the minutes, I don't know how it was, in theory, that's how it was said in the meeting, but.
Okay.
Without.
I just. I appreciate, just.
Yeah.
Just so we know exactly what.
Yeah.
It'd just be helpful for.
Yeah, no, I remember having, I was on that one, I remember having a discussion about, I don't usually like creating the cliff, but the board of that was paid for most of it, then there was other pieces to it.
But it's still one up.
Yeah.
Eight percent.
Yeah.
Yeah. So.
I, I appreciate.
Some of that fifteen percent is for clarity, is the contract services is up thirty six thousand, twenty five thousand of which I was gonna budget in Controller's Department. At some point, we'd like to get off paper timesheets that we're on, um, most of, I was gonna put it in the Controller's budget, um, cause that's, we were down like forty four or whatever, we were down. Uh, but it makes more sense in IT, cause that's where we put all the software costs.
So are you going to ADP or something like?
We were gonna go to ADP, there were issues, we need to look at another software, um. It's still, there's other issues that we have to take care of first before we do it, so.
Well, thank you for the explanation.
Yeah.
Alright. So, um.
Make a motion, make a motion to approve, uh, technology in the amount of four hundred and eighteen thousand nine hundred and seventy two dollars submitted, second.
Motion on table, all in favor?
Alright.
I.
I.
I make a motion that we open account ten dash two one zero, insurance for discussion.
Second.
All in favor?
I, okay, I just, I did reach out to Karma, who's our insurance agent for the bulk of our insurance, um, this week. Um, just to make sure that they didn't have a better rate for us, they said they will look at it again as it gets closer to the end of the plan year, which is for June thirtieth. But that is, in theory, what the maximum increase will be, we will, I will reach out again before we set a budget completely, it's just too early for them to give us an updated number. Um, and yes, that seems greedy because they lowered our worker's comp number, but they do have us at a three percent increase in lab. Um, so, if our lab number, liability and property insurance is good, I'm hoping that they'll lower that to zero at some point, they have done that in the past, if we bug them out about it, and had good, you know, plans.
They went up six percent, right?
Six percent, Karma went up three percent, in that account is also flood insurance, it's also cyber insurance, the bulk of it is the property and liability, but cyber goes up. We were lucky that it only went up twenty percent from like twenty five thousand to thirty thousand this year.
Um, what properties do we own that are flooded though?
Um, a lot of the pump stations. So, traditionally, we only then do the flood insurance for everything that's above water, you know, the other things are meant to be underwater, but the building itself does have value.
Okay.
Um, that may go down at some point with the police coming off board, but we'd have to look at it, I don't, I think because it's a vacant building, I don't think the insurance on it's very high right now anyway.
So it won't be there.
But we probably don't need flood insurance on the future.
Yeah.
Liability, we keep, just so we keep ourselves safe, it's a breaks in against her, but.
Just for general information, the building never flooded from the river, it flooded from the sewer back, you know, but.
But that's an argument to have with FEMA.
Yeah.
FEMA put in the flood.
FEMA, yeah, was out of money and they redrew the flood zone.
My house downtown on South Street, which my surveyor said it would have to be a biblical flood, could never flood, and I pay flood insurance on that house, it's crazy. Cause they just indiscriminately needed more properties in there till the biggest money grabs in a long time.
Okay. Make a motion. And we approve one million three hundred and fifty two thousand nine hundred and eighty seven dollars to submit it for insurance.
Second. Okay, motion on the floor, all in favor? I. Oppose, none, motion carries. Like a mo, I'll make a motion to open account ten dash two fifty, planning and zoning for discussion.
Second.
All in favor? I.
I.
Oppose. Okay.
Make a motion that we approve the requested budget of two hundred and seventy three thousand seven hundred and thirty four dollars, I mean, it was all just personal and everything else.
Second.
Okay, motion for, all in favor?
I.
Oppose, none, motion carries. I can make a motion, open up account ten dash three three zero, register our voters for discussion.
Second.
All in favor? I. Oppose.
I make a motion that we approve the requested budget of one hundred and twelve thousand one hundred and ninety dollars.
Second.
All in favor?
I.
Oppose. Make a motion over the count, count ten dash three four zero, boards of commission for discussion. All in favor?
I.
I oppose, none. Okay.
I'll do this one, Richard.
Sure.
Make a motion to approve the words of commission in the amount of sixty thousand six hundred dollars.
Second.
Okay, motion on floor, all in favor?
I.
I. Oppose, none, motion carries. Make a motion, open up account ten dash three eight zero, parks and recreation for discussion, second. All in favor? I. Oppose, none.
I, I see no reason, I mean, they're one of our biggest revenue getters, right? Yeah. Besides taxes, Brad.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, you know, I, I, I see.
And even then, you know, they're, they're trying very hard to bring the mean department.
Yes, you're bringing in the programs, raising that up, it's, it's a benefit that they pay for themselves.
Yeah, and a lot of the salary line increases that before aftercare, and that's a big reason that the revenue is going up too.
So, I, I make a motion, we accept Parks and Recreation, it's requested budget in the amount of one million six hundred and ninety five thousand five hundred and thirty three dollars.
All in favor?
I.
Oppose, none. Make a motion, we open account ten dash three nine zero, boy benefits for discussion.
Do you wanna hold this one for the end, cause then if there's other salary changes, well, they're just like.
Oh Brad, I thought you were saying about opting out of insurance.
So I, I withhold my motion. Uh, I do make a motion, open account ten dash four zero five, intergovernment agency subs for discussion.
Second.
All in favor?
I.
Okay, I don't think there's anything to do here.
I make a motion that we approve the, the intergovernment agency as submitted for four hundred and eighty three thousand sixty eight dollars as submitted.
Second.
Okay, motion for, all in favor?
I.
Oppose, none, motion carries. I make a motion, open account ten dash four one zero, utilities charges for discussion.
Second.
Yeah, all in favor?
I.
I.
Just to bring it up, we are reaching out to our vendors to try to, right now, we're locked up for gasoline and diesel through six thirty twenty three, um, we reached out today about natural gas, which is one of the bigger increases in this budget. It's a hundred and eighty thousand dollars, up the two hundred and eleven thousand dollar increase, um, and it hasn't dropped yet, they're hoping in the next month or so, there might drop, and if it is, we'll jump on it. Um, we are monitoring it, cause it is a big increase, but there's really not a lot we can do about it now, um, but we are trying to reach out and extend some of our agree, agreements, if it'll save us money. Um, but until we lock something in, I don't really see an ability to decrease this.
I noticed on here too, sixty five percent of the natural gas and seventy six percent of the electric are all schools, so it's probably worth noting, just.
Yeah.
Brad, who, who does our electric?
Uh, it's Constellation, um, why this number for utilities is not much higher, is we locked in with Constellation two years ago for a five year, right? It's one, uh, I can't take credit for it, the former controller did it, um, but, you know, forget I did it, he's gone. But that savings a, a fortune right now.
Do you know the number?
I mean, the. I don't know offhand, cause we, I'm, obviously, we haven't looked, had to look at it in a couple years.
Just out of curiosity, do you know any, do you have an idea what, if we were still burning oil, what the delta would be?
It's a good point, I could, I could tell you this, I spent eight hundred dollars for my little thing.
Oh, yes. So, well, it's crazy, what's hard is the per therm for natural gas is way up too, so it's.
Yeah.
Uh, just, yeah.
Utility to the roof.
Yeah.
Uh, I'll make a motion that we approve the utility charges in the amount of two million nine hundred and twenty four thousand nine hundred and twenty eight dollars as submitted.
I reluctantly.
All in favor?
I.
I oppose. Alright, I'd like to, I'll make a motion to open account ten dash four twenty, this charges and transfers for discussion, second. All in favor?
I.
I. Oppose, none, motion carries, okay.
Um, Brad, just a question, with, were any of these, is this where we have our, our wage contingency?
Yeah, so the five three five three wage adjustment account, it's a decrease year over year because we settled some contracts, um, in that three thirty four number is two years of potential police increases. Uh, one year dispatch increases because of dispatcher contract and six thirty twenty three, and non-union and elected officials.
But nothing, nothing with, none of the benefits or anything associated with the new hires.
Alright, that's, okay, no, no, thank you.
Did, uh, did that come down that we settled highway?
The highway was, you guys voted on it recently, but we had a TA on it.
Yeah.
Uh, two months ago, so when I filled out all the numbers, I built it out with the agreement that we had.
Okay.
And if you guys voted against that contract, I would have had to scramble.
Uh, I'll make a motion, we approve this way, and charges and transfers in the amount of one million eighty six thousand seven hundred and sixteen dollars.
Okay, motion for all in favor? I. Oppose, none, motion carries. I make a motion, open account ten dash four three zero, senior center for discussion. Okay, motion people, all in favor?
I.
I oppose.
I make a motion that we accept the senior centers requested budget of two hundred and sixty thousand fifty dollars.
And, um, when, when I have a discussion, I just wanna, I probably just, nobody's on there today, but, you know, anybody in the Board of Finance who's listening, or anybody out there, you gotta go visit Senior Center, you gotta see what they do with, what we give them, it's amazing work that they do, so. I'm definitely gonna support this, any further discussion? All in favor, aye. Opposed, motion carries. I'd like to make a motion that we open account twenty dash one, eight, zero, building inspection for discussion.
Second.
Motion table, uh, on favor, aye, opposed, none. Okay.
I'll, I'll make the motion to approve the building inspector's budget of three hundred forty-eight thousand, three hundred forty-eight dollars. Yeah.
Okay, just saying from, so I'm interested in, motion on table, on favor, aye.
That's interesting.
Yeah, how'd that happen, that's. Um, I make a motion, open account twenty dash two, nine, zero, emergency management for discussion.
Second.
All in favor, aye. All right. Special.
I'll make a motion to approve merge management in the amount of forty-five thousand, eighty-three dollars.
That's second.
Okay, so, uh, motion on the floor, on favor, aye, opposed, none, motion carries. I make a motion, open account twenty dash three, zero, zero, fire marshal for discussion. Okay, motionable on, on favor, aye, opposed, okay, motion carries.
I make a motion to accept the requested budget of one hundred thirteen thousand, two hundred ninety-eight dollars.
Emotion on table, all in favor, aye, opposed, none, motion carries. I make a motion, open account two, zero, dash, three, one, zero, metal fire department for discussion. Second. All in favor, aye.
Make a motion that we accept their requested budget of two hundred two thousand, three hundred six dollars.
Second.
Okay, motion on table, all in favor, aye, opposed, none, motion carries. I make a motion, open account twenty dash three, two, zero, Stony Hill Fire Department for discussion.
Second.
All in favor, aye, opposed.
I make a motion, we approve Stone Hill Fire Department in the amount of one hundred seventy-seven thousand, three hundred dollars as submitted.
Second.
Motion table, on favor. Aye, opposed. Please. Make a motion, open account three, zero, dash, two, zero, zero, social services for discussion.
Second.
All in favor, aye, opposed, okay, it carries.
Make the motion that we. Accept the requested budget of ninety-two thousand, seven hundred ninety-five dollars.
Second.
Okay, motion on table, all in favor, aye, opposed. I make a motion, we open account three, zero, dash, three, five, zero, health department for discussion, second. All in favor, aye, any opposed?
Uh, I'd like to discuss this one.
Okay.
I'm gonna make a motion that we reduce line fifty-one, oh, one. By ten thousand, four hundred dollars. Which. Would give them the ability to start their part timer in January.
Just say that Richard would like me to do it.
A second.
So the motion on the table right now for discussion is to, uh, for reduce line fifty-one, oh, one by ten thousand, four hundred. If you notice, the department has asked for twenty thousand, eight hundred for a part-time person.
Right.
Um, part of the reasoning, I mean, I know, I know, we're trying to trim these budgets, you know, as, as the new town CEO, basically. Uh, I'm asking for a little time to actually vet, you know, what's going on down there. Um, try to see how much need there is. And, you know, this is kind of a plea to say, you know, please don't take it out entirely, you know, but I think starting somebody halfway through the year would be viable.
I know. My knowledge of, of that's, uh, trying to get up and running has been very difficult for this new system. Uh. Laura's been struggling down there and she really felt that she needed this other person to help the, the system get up and running. I know, uh, Chris Baldwin was spearheading, uh, that system down there. Uh, to get everybody on, online to do their, uh, applications and everything. And, um. I, I will support the cut. That's.
There's it. Okay, the motion on the table to take ten thousand, four hundred dollars from line fifty-one, oh, one. All in favor, aye, aye.
Aye.
So two, four, one, plus motion carries.
The new dollar amount for that account will be five hundred twenty-two thousand, five hundred and fifty-seven dollars. Five, five, two, five, five, no, sorry, five, two, two, five, five, seven.
Make a motion that we, uh. Accept the new budget for the health department at five hundred twenty-two thousand, five hundred and fifty-seven dollars.
Second. Motion table, all in favor, aye.
Hey.
You got that?
Yeah, I voted against.
Yeah. And motion carries. I can open up account four, zero, dash, two, two, zero, fleet maintenance for discussion.
Second.
All in favor, aye, opposed.
Okay, so in. This, uh, I want to discuss line number fifty-two, oh, six. Some of the items they had in here really, I felt should have been paid with capital, not reoccurring. They had the fleet software, remember, for, I think the John Deere tractors. And then they had a gas pump nozzle, you know, both things that really I don't think belong. Operating budget, so I'm gonna request a reduction of eleven thousand, five hundred dollars. And ask that the board of finance accept that through CNR, those two requests.
Second.
Second, for, okay. Well, it'll have to start here though, where it's like.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Direct recommendation.
Um, that's a good question. That'll have to be a second. Like we could, we could do it, it's pre-move.
You're, all you're doing is removing it and then to go back to it.
Tuesday, Tuesday.
Right.
Well, actually we'd have to wait. Or we have to wait for July.
And we can do it on March seven.
No, because it's capital not.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Whenever.
Uh, maybe they could actually get it early.
Early, yeah.
Get it out of the way.
That's what I'm thinking, okay.
So what's our new total?
Uh, hold on, we have to actually, uh, let's, we have a motion, we have a second.
Oh.
All in favor, removing five, excuse me, eleven thousand, five hundred dollars from line. Fifty-two, oh, six. All in favor, aye, opposed, none, okay.
So the new total for fleet maintenance is three hundred and seventy-five thousand, seven hundred and forty dollars, three, seven, five, seven, four, zero.
And you'll take care of the above the line, you'll subtract the eleven thousand, five hundred.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, that, yeah, so that, the forty-six, nine went down to thirty-five, four, right, so.
Right.
I make a motion that we accept. Uh, the new budget of, I believe you said it was three hundred seventy-five thousand, seven hundred and forty dollars for fleet maintenance.
Second.
Okay, motion on table, uh, on favor, aye, aye. I make a motion, we open up account four, zero, dash, two, three, zero, public works for discussion.
Okay.
Okay, all in favor, aye.
I would like to discuss line number five, three, one, three. Um. And what I'd like to do is, you know, we did hire a new civil engineer in this department who's taken up some of the contracted services. So I'd like to reduce that line by four thousand and put them back to their current year budget.
And, okay. And in discussions, uh, you know, when we were, uh, when we were speaking about that in the presentation, I think that, yeah, there was a general knowledge that. Obviously, we want to keep a decent number, but we could do a lot more having our own engineers.
Right, yep.
Okay, so, uh, the motion on the floor is to remove four thousand dollars from line fifty-three, one, three. All in favor, aye. Opposed, motion carries.
So the new total for forty, dash, two, thirty, four hundred fifty-three thousand, seven hundred and eighty-nine dollars, four, five, three, seven, eight, nine.
I make a motion that we accept the, uh, new public works budget at four hundred fifty-three thousand, seven hundred eighty-nine dollars.
Second. Motion on table, all in favor, aye, aye. Opposed, so none, motion carries. I generally, they're very. Good.
You're awesome.
He's quicker than us.
I'd like to make a motion, uh, to open account four, zero, dash, two, four, zero, highway for discussion, second. All in favor, aye, opposed. And discussion.
All right.
Yeah, I want to say this represents a, uh, a really good opportunity for us. For the first time, we will have a requested road budget over a million dollars. And given that, you know, for the roads, I think this is a excellent opportunity.
So originally, you only can do the same amount of mileage.
I know.
From the hundreds of, but.
Yeah.
I know, yes.
Um. Okay, so, um, have a motion.
I'll make a motion and we approve the highway budget in the amount of two million, six hundred and twenty-eight thousand, five hundred seventeen dollars as submitted.
Second. Okay, we have a motion for, all in favor, aye, aye. Opposed, none, motion carries, we'll be very grateful with them in the morning.
They're gonna use up some of that.
Yeah, use up some of that sand tonight and Friday. Um, I'd like to make a motion, please, to open account four, zero, dash, two, four, five, transfer station for discussion. All in favor, aye, okay. I don't think there's anything here to do. Yeah, motion.
I make a motion that we accept the transfer station's requested budget of two hundred twelve thousand, three hundred eighty-seven dollars.
Second.
The motion for all in favor, aye. Opposed, motion carries. I can open account four, zero, dash, I can make a motion to open account four, zero, two, six, zero, building maintenance for discussion.
Second.
All in favor, aye.
I'd like to discuss, uh, fifty-one, oh, one salary line. Uh, I would like to reduce that by thirty-two thousand, five hundred. Plus to the, uh. Boy, that I believe came up to approximately sixty-five thousand, so by doing this, they can start.
I'll, I'll second the motion for discussion.
Okay.
It, it's just, uh. Eric came and, and said that, you know, just. You know, that I don't want to say they're overworked, but they're not, they're, they're not doing preventative stuff. And that's why some of their contracted services are going up, uh, just that I, I think. You know, we can be proactive and try to, uh, cut down on maybe some of the other major repairs if we can do some more preventative maintenance on it, so. Uh, I don't support the cut.
I understand your point, but to be honest with you, contracted services went up four thousand, not even. And the majority of those repairs and maintenance are handled by your contracts. I mean, you know, we're not servicing the AC units, we're not servicing the heat, we're not servicing a lot of that. I mean, you know, and facilities that, I mean, most of my contracted services take care of the major repairs and that's what we hire them for. Again, I'm not saying they're not working hard, I'm just saying this isn't the year to add a lot of personnel. I know there's, a lot of people are, are, are struggling, are committed right now, you know.
And I also know that, uh, you know, the schools is a major, uh. workload for the, for the building maintenance. And I know the, they had some issues with doors and that they couldn't fix them themselves, they had a higher outside contractor to come in and do some of their repairs. You know. Half a loaf is better than no loaf, but. I, I don't support the cut.
So, um, one of the reasons that I, I'm, I'm supportive is that, obviously, I don't want the whole thing to get wrecked.
Yeah.
You know, I don't, I think, um, as the new, as the new guy on the block, I have an opportunity to work with them. And I've, I've heard that they've done a better job with work order system, that they're making progress. Uh, to your point, I think Eric made a very good case why we need more people first for our foot. And, and, and I do see that. I think, um, you know, making this half year, we're still fighting for the position, but we're, we're doing it in a reasonable way. I think that we'll get somebody on board, so that's the one reason I kind of went with that, with it myself.
Once things really go south. Before a person's hired, it's easier to eliminate position than once.
Yeah.
You know, you've offered someone a job, I mean, there's a lot of uncertainty. Over the next few months and, and, you know, rising interest rates, what's happening to the economy, fuel inflation. I mean, I just think it makes sense to hold off until January and at that point, you know, see where we are at, as a talent.
What was the number you reduced?
Thirty-two thousand, five hundred dollars.
Any, any further discussion? Okay, so there's a motion on the floor, remove thirty-two thousand, five hundred dollars from line fifty-one, oh, one in account forty, dash, and sixty. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Yeah, so I can straighten the votes.
The new total for that department, uh, would be nine, one, six, three, eight, two, nine hundred and sixteen thousand, three hundred and eighty-two dollars.
Well, I will make the motion then that we accept, uh, newer budget for account four, two, sixty of nine hundred sixteen thousand, three hundred and eighty-two dollars.
Second. Motion on the table, all in favor, aye, aye, opposed, oh. Make a motion that we open account four, zero, dash, two, seven, zero, tree ward for discussion, second. All in favor, aye, aye, opposed, none, okay.
Oh. Under contracted services, I mean, we're looking at an eighty-five thousand dollar increase. I, I do believe that there are a lot of trees that have to come down more so. Than in any other, you know, time with all these ash trees dying. I, I still think there's room to cut this budget. I'm, I'm gonna make a motion that we reduce this line by twenty-five thousand dollars.
Second. Okay, so, um, any further discussion? I, I tend to agree in the sense that, uh, you're speaking with the director. Yes, he, he seemed to indicate there was probably some room here, as my man asked him. At the same time, you know, there's a balance between, we have liability, you know, with trees. So I, you know, I think not gutting the budget makes sense, but, you know, twenty-five thousand would be somewhat reasonable.
It's still, what, what's that percentage?
Well, at the reduction of twenty-five percent, it's still to that one line, a seventy-nine percent increase to the total budget. I don't know about.
No, good.
No, I got it, I have a hidden column in here for four, it's like.
It's fifty.
It was seventy-nine, now it's fifty-six percent for that one line, the count as a whole is fifty-one.
I mean, that's a healthy amount of extra trees.
And they always come back if there's emergencies, I mean, I've cut it, I mean, if it's an emergency, it's, I got it, yeah, right.
And, and I'll also say this, um, you know, I've met with EverSource already, you know, and it sounds like the. Our public works and, and the tree warden and EverSource are all communicating pretty frequently right now, so. I feel like they're in a good place with this second trees. So, all right, so there's a motion on the floor to, uh, remove twenty-five thousand dollars from, from line fifty-three, one, three, account forty, dash, seventy. All in favor, aye, opposed. I go with account fifty, dash, four, four, zero, debt service for.
We have to do the.
Oh, I knew.
One hundred and seventy-seven thousand, nine hundred.
Okay.
I make a, which, uh, make the new budget.
One seventy-seven, nine hundred.
One seventy-seven, nine hundred.
A second. Okay, all in favor, aye, opposed. Outstanding. Um, I'd like to open account five, zero, dash, four, four, zero, debt service for discussion. All in favor, aye. Okay. How long we can do with this one?
Brad, Brad, when, when will we start seeing a reduction if we don't take on new money at debt service?
So the, I didn't reprint this, it's still in your original one, because I didn't think that printed out again, but because you had it. Um, we're starting to see the reduction, we've kind of leveled it, the reduction based on, because we've been using the debt service. Um, without using any of that debt service fund money, we would have gone from a twenty-three budget of six point eight million down to six point one. And next year it'd be five point nine and five point four. What we've done by using that debt service fund, Brian, is pretty much get there much quicker. So we should have gotten down to the five point four. So, we should have gotten down to the five point four million in twenty twenty-six. Um, and we're there now, because we've had these other funds to use. So, we pretty much just used this money to get there faster. It was twenty twenty-six, though, when you really started seeing, and get to this level.
And current interest rates are not conducive to short-term borrowing, correct?
Um, I don't know what short-term's looking at right now. Um, the rates have come down from municipal bonding for longer-term debt, um.
Is what's a typical bond rate now for?
Um, I'd have to look up, our, our counsel on it, not counsel, our advisor on it, he always sends me when there's a sale. Um, so, give me one second.
But I'm not suggesting I wanna buy that thing right now. Yes, just trying to get my head around what's going on, you know, to this world. There with me for a moment.
So, February third, South Windsor did one. Um, and they got, uh, a three point one eight five, to do twenty-eight million dollars.
Compared to what were we getting a couple years?
Yeah, it was, um, so it's lower. The net was down, it's in the two, I think.
Still not, yeah, it's not a really good time to be borrow.
It's not as bad as the private sector for borrowing money, by any means, because municipal bond market's still strong, but, yeah, we.
Brad, that's like saying you have three flat tires of the guy next to you. How lucky am I? I just, just wanted to point that out.
Three point two's not bad, though.
Look, my first mortgage was eight percent, and I thought it was a great rate. Tell that to someone who's thirty and was, lived, you know, in the two percent, three percent range, it's that, they don't feel it's that good a rate.
Alright. I'll make a motion that we, uh, approve the debt service in the amount of five million four hundred twenty-seven thousand forty-four dollars.
Second. Okay, motion on floor, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
O's. Alright, so.
You just need to grant.
Okay, okay.
So, we still need to go back to employees.
Oh. So, do we do the, do we have to, he just did the total, so we're good.
As we did ten thirty, Matt.
I open, I make a motion.
Making those two part-time people.
Um, second. So, yeah, so let me make the motion. I make a motion, open ten dash three nine zero void benefits for discussion. Second. All in favor? Alright.
So, the adjustments that were made to the other accounts, there's three reductions in salary line items. Sixty thousand for police, ten thousand four hundred for health, and building maintenance was thirty-two thousand five hundred. That total is a hundred and two thousand nine hundred dollars. So when you times that by the so, social security, Medicare age, what we call FICA, you get, uh, a further reduction to this account can be seven thousand eight hundred and seventy-two dollars. It's pretty much seven point six five of the one oh two nine hundred.
Okay, I'd make a motion that we reduce line five one one two by seven thousand eight hundred and seventy-two dollars.
Second. Any further discussion? Okay, I have motion on the floor, uh, all in favor? Aye. O's.
The new total for that, uh, department would be six million six hundred and seventy-one thousand seven hundred and twenty-one dollars. Six million six seven one seven one.
I make a motion for account ten three ninety to approve of six million six hundred and seventy-one thousand seven hundred.
Second. All in favor? Aye. O's. Hang on. Okay, so I believe we have to go back now for the totals, is that right here?
Yep, I'm just making sure I didn't miss anything before I give you totals. Okay, that would be embarrassing.
Now, we, uh. So, it's a shift of town, so we already did work that total, so.
Do you want me to list off the three pieces of the town total, just so you have them?
Sure.
Um, so town operating would be thirty million six thousand two hundred and forty-two dollars. Thirty million six thousand two four two. That's.
Two four two?
Yes.
Wait, wait, thirty million.
Yeah.
Six thousand.
Two, six thousand.
Three zero 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 six.
Catch. Yes.
I had a hard time with that one.
Me too.
Um, debt service stays at the five million four two seven zero four four. Order that education maintenance is still at the requested of five hundred thirteen thousand eight hundred and eighty dollars. For a total town amount of thirty-five million nine hundred and forty-seven thousand one hundred and sixty-six dollars. So thirty-five million nine four seven one six six.
And what's the BOE's budget?
The BOE budget is fifty-four million two hundred and nine thousand one hundred and sixty-four dollars. So fifty-four two oh nine one six four. And then the total would be ninety million one five six three three zero. So ninety-nine one hundred and fifty-six thousand three hundred and thirty dollars.
So then, um. I'll make a motion that we accept thirty-five million nine hundred and forty-seven thousand one hundred and sixty-six dollars as the town budget. Second. All in favor? I oppose. To none, motion carries. We did that correct, right, because we didn't have.
Yeah, you did the town operating plus the debt plus the board that maintains.
Cool.
That's what shows up in the referendum.
Alright. Right, I believe that is it, is there anything else, Brad, that we're missing?
No, just to give you some updated numbers, the, um, the reduction tonight was four hundred twenty-seven thousand seven hundred and ninety-three dollars. Um, the overall town increase prior to tonight was six point zero six percent, it now stands at five point five six percent.
Say those two percent.
So it was at six oh six, now it's at five point five six.
Well, no, that's a severe for finance.
Yeah, it's just where we stand right now at this moment.
And then, if we do get savings from our town's insurance and whatnot, it could reduce.
Yeah.
Like that three percent represented how much? A thousand, but it lasted like a hundred something thousand?
No, because the whole count was five hundred and eighty thousand.
So we'll, oh, so it's three percent of that, three percent of that, okay.
Yeah, it's not, if they go back down to zero, it's not a huge savings, but if we get word that they're going to, we'll take it.
I just, you know, very unique here, like we haven't had.
Alright, um, if there is no other business, I would take a motion for justice. So move. And I, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everybody.